So, starting off at Darien High School on page one, just a few things. We are recommending some transfers, in particular for the substitute teacher lines. You'll see that it's currently short and all of the, pretty much all of the accounts in the substitutes are short. We're revising them to where the trend is, which will probably, will most likely bring us back up to where the actuals are in 2017, 2018. We have an adjustment for the science teachers for the high school. And then there's also a, an additional amount that's remaining in the custodial line because we did have a custodian that actually had left and we had a replacement that did that as well. So there really are three accounts here in the high school that we have some transfers going into, which would be science, the substitutes, and then we're remaining the custodial line as well. On page two, the operational, at this stage, we usually, we typically go ahead and forecast all of the operational lines to be fully spent by the end of the year. And I'm not sure if you have any additional questions on Darien High School as of now. Fitch Academy, which is on page three, is currently in line. Middlesex on page four. We do have some additional funds in the assistant principal because, as you're aware, we did hire a new assistant principal at the start of this year. We also had a change in the guidance, so you'll see an increase in the guidance, or at least a surplus in the guidance, because we have a guidance person that moved over to the high school, the high school moved over to the assistant principal, and there is a residual that is remaining there. So that's really why there's a positive end-of-the-year forecast right now in the middle school and salary account.
Is it similar for the high school?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. The operating in the middle school, everything seems to be in line as of now on page five. And then Henley on page six. For personnel, everything also is in line. There is a positive variance of $7,554, but that is also due to the principal. We had a new principal that had come in. And then we also have an adjustment for the substitute teacher account as well. On page seven is Holmes.
So with Holmes, that substitute teacher line?
Yes.
So, did we just, it seems to be coming back in line to where it's been historically? Did we just under budget?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm gonna have questions. I did a little bit of an analysis on the substitutes, and I can, I think I'll just address that when we go through maybe the budget later on in the meeting, but this is one of the schools that jumped out at me in terms of the current and historical level of substitute need at that school.
Okay.
But I'll address that later on.
Okay.
Thanks.
And in clubs and councils, there is a transfer in for clubs and councils. In short, each elementary school is allowed to have four different stipends for clubs and councils. Some have three, some have four. They have the option, depending upon what the need is in individual school. The need here for Holmes was for four this year, so that's why there's an increase, or that's why there's a shortfall in the request for transfer for $2,200.
And that's, those funds are available, but I also did a little bit of an analysis, analysis on the elementary clubs and councils, and it seems that it's not consistent among the elementary schools. Some of them are taking advantage of the funds that are available, but some of them are not. So there is, does seem to be discrepancy. It's not consistent among the elementary schools.
So it does run by choice, correct? They have the option of at most four?
They have the option of at most having four, depending upon the interest that each individual school has for operating that. So there could be some teachers that do not necessarily have the interest in offering that, or there may not be students that are interested in that particular club.
I guess my concern is that we don't budget for it, but we may come to a situation where the schools that aren't choosing decide at some point they would like to use the four that they've been allocated. Okay. Thanks.
Page nine, Royal Elementary School. We had a change, another change in the custodian.
Are they coming in at a different level, or is it just the difference of not having one and then hiring one?
Not having one and then hiring one. Token Eek on page 10. And then we're going into PE, RC 11, on page 11. We do have a transfer in for athletic training services in the amount of $3,150, I believe. This is for us, a couple of the games or programs may need an additional services that the athletic director subcontract for. Dues and membership also-
I'm sorry, Mike?
Yes.
Services like what can you expand on?
If there were two more than a couple games that are playing at once, that he deems that he needs additional services for, he'll go ahead and he'll subcontract for that. So if there was a, I'm not even sure what, two games that possibly could be a softball game and a baseball game, or something along those lines.
So they just need another trainer present?
Correct, at that time.
Probably CAC rules. That would be probably CAC rules that they are abiding by what is required on, presence on the field?
It's, I would defer over to the, I'm not necessar, I'm not 100% sure.
Okay.
The athletic director would be.
Okay.
On page 12, maintenance. No, and I didn't do any transfers into that. I left that whole, because there will be some offset that will be taking that back down for some of the rental and facilities that we have not reconciled just yet, so I kept that intact as to the negative until we reconcile that account and bring it in line. RC, and then-
I'm sorry, on the maintenance, the fencing, could you just specify the fencing entrance markings? Where, where's that? Or we can go, if you want to go into more detail, when we talk about the transfers, you can do that. I'm just looking at that maintenance number.
Yep.
That's fine. We can talk about that.
I could now, so this was, we did, had to replace some of the fencing at the high school for the baseball field, and then some of the entrance markings were also done at the beginning of the year, the first couple of months of parking lot markings that had to be done.
Okay, and then new equipment is just, those are the ACs that were-
Correct, so that's a new, a new request. It's a new line that we are going ahead, we're separating for, out for, so we are on-
13?
Page 13, line number 493. So that is for the acquisitions of the air conditioning units at those three elementary schools.
Okay.
Art is in line on page 15, and computer technology is also in line on page 16. There's a significant amount that is remaining in the salary account that is due to the director of instructional technology not being filled, forecasting it not being filled to the end of the year. So when we do look at the salaries, at a 10,000-foot level, the salaries are in the positive, around $285,000 or $289,000. It really is attributed to three different areas. One would be the middle school guidance council that I briefly had mentioned. The second area would be of technology with a large vacancy, and then the third area would be under RC 16 would be the superintendent.
Right, so those are numbers that-
So those three are basically bringing us over for the salary line, or at least-
So those are just anomalies and eventually those positions will be filled?
Correct. Yes.
Well, to be clear, they're based on current year staffing, but you shouldn't expect to see them year over year, because those positions hopefully will be full.
Correct, yes. Administration, RC 16 on page 17, as I mentioned, the superintendent. And then as well as the legal services account, I think we've went through this a couple times regarding our trend and where we're forecasting at the end of the year. We're still on forecast of ending at 323,000, which would give us in the negative $70,639. On health, RC 17 on page 18, everything is in line, a minor variance with the nursing We're looking at our long-term subs being slightly over as of now, 500, and that's really as a result of any type of long-term leave that any teacher goes on.
We, we do see the forecast adjusted there for the long-term subs. Is that something that will correct at some point or adjust transfer for later down?
Yes, I would do another one later on.
Okay.
And then in budget control and the highlight that what I'll start doing as well in response to the board's questions, highlighted what budget control we've currently utilized and what is currently remaining as we go forward. RC 19, curriculum on page 20, everything also is in line here. RC 20, finance is on page 21. The library on page 22. Everything is in line. And RC 22 on technology, everything is also in line with budget. RC 23, continuing ed on page 24. Everything is also in line. And then we're into special education on page 25 and 26.
And we're just adjusting that downward?
We have some minor adjustments, what we'd like to do for 24 is to keep everything intact, for the most part, with some minor transfers, and because as we know, we have a different excess revenue.
Right, but we're making that transfer for substitutes.
Except the transfer for substitutes, correct? Under 25, fixed costs. Everything also is in line. We'll continue to monitor our heating fuel and electric use, in particular the heating fuel as the winter months come through, but everything right now is in line. And when we're looking at insurances as well, we've already made some adjustments previously in the insurance. Everything else is coming in as forecast, and the retirement and OPEB is as well coming in as we forecasted as well. That leaves us with RC 26, early learning program on page 29. We do have some transfers going in in order to reconcile the substitute teacher account that we've already previously had mentioned, and there has been some minor changes in the special class teacher lines with people coming in and out of that account.
So we're not adjusting today for the, or next week for the special class teachers? That's, that $10,000?
No.
Okay. Says it, professional development, training at the beginning of the year?
Yes, Laura did some additional training at the beginning of the year that brought that line over. I believe that had to do with restraint training for teachers. And with that, I do have a listing of budget transfers before you.
Okay, should we just start at the top?
Okay.
And see if people have questions as we go down? So the assistant principal, what is LOA?
Leave of absence.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
So a leave of absence had occurred, little bit more of leave, gives us an additional amount remaining in the account.
So there's nothing particularly out of ordinary from any of the transfers that we typically save this time of year?
No, there's really, no. One that we had briefly talked, so the in and out of some of the salary lines are just a reconciliation of some of those accounts that people have been moving in and out, or there's a retirement or resignation that actually occurs, or a change in staffing. We've discussed briefly the clubs and councils at Holmes, there are four, there were three stipend positions, now there are four stipend positions, so we're transferring the 2,240. There was a request from the principal at Holmes to transfer out of the periodicals into the general teaching supplies account for some purchases that they would like to go ahead and do, and then the amount of $761, so you'd see that as a wash between the two accounts. We've mentioned briefly the substitute teacher account, as well as the athletic training services for some additional coverage that have occurred. There was, there's also a transfer in for the professional development at the beginning of the year. Chris Manfredoni had all of the coaches attend some additional P, I'm sorry, all the phys ed teachers attend some additional PE at the start of the year. We do have some transfers in for improvement of sites. We had some fencing repairs at the high school, as well as entrance markings at some of the elementary schools. And the larger one is for the new equipment for maintenance is the air conditioners at Holmes, Henley, and Royal. And the rest are substitutes and some salary, minor salary adjustments. If there's any particular line.
At a high level, some substitutes, is some of that caught, is some of that caused by the change in how the pay is done, or is there also a trend in, do you know, in the need for substitute teachers, or is there a difference in how they're being paid? Did that change last year, correct?
It did. So they were always taking advantage of it, so teachers were covering for teachers. And now they paid $30 for each class that they were covering for. So when we adopted the budget last year, we didn't necessarily have all of the back as to where the trends currently were, so we were under budget for the substitute teacher account. So now we're bringing it back up into line where the previous fiscal years were. But when you do look at those, some of those lines in 16, 17, going to 17, 18, there are some significant spikes in the high school and the middle school, but it is a result of teachers now getting $30 a class for covering.
So you could, you could account for that, because the high school has jumped up pretty considerably. In 2016, 17, it was six, about $65,000, and now we're looking at, in this current year, $92,000. So it seems like a big jump. Is it just that $30? It can't be.
Yes.
Because aren't we still hiring other substitutes as well? So I guess my, where I'm going with this is if you're not needing to hire an outside substitute and you're using an inside teacher, it's $30 versus, I'm not sure what the cost is.
Well, so, yes.
So there doesn't seem to be any, it seems like there's just a gross effect, not like a net effect. In other words, are we saving any money by using teachers?
So, Mike, can you explain? I don't think it's a trade-off of, we, it wasn't that we weren't hiring anybody, or we were. I'm actually-
Correct. So, so teachers were always covering for classes.
They weren't getting compensated for it.
But they were not getting compensated for. And then we went to the negotiations, we got less personal days that teachers could actually take. We went from five over to three, and this was a trade-off as part of a whole package that we, that was just one example of part of a trade-off that had occurred. But they were previously, were covering the classes. Now, we weren't necessarily sure as to quantify what that value, we thought that the value was going to be about $20,000.
It's coming closer to $30,000. Well, now, I mean, I guess with the adjustment, we're at $92,000.
Yes.
So it's almost $30,000, an increase at DHS, which is, seems to me to be quite a bit of a jump up.
Well, so an internal analysis, maybe for the administration, but not for the board, might be to look at how much of that is contractual, and then are you seeing higher absentee rates? Which is stuff that we wouldn't necessarily deal with, but that could be interesting now that the contract is in effect.
Dig a little deep.
And we have that data. So it sounds like last year when we were budgeting, we didn't have the data, we didn't know exactly what it was going to work out to be.
And I guess, is that the same situation at the middle school?
Yes, and that's pretty much all, because elementary schools are a little different.
Right, you have to hire a substitute, so those, I mean, those numbers. But, so there, there was a jump up at the middle school, but it was only about $13,000 compared to the high school, which is close to $30,000. So, yeah, it'd be great, I'm just me looking at the numbers and trying to get a handle on it. The ICDHS, MMS, and Holmes, the sort of things that I picked, schools that I picked up on that were trending a little bit differently than maybe the other elementary schools. Something just to-
You go back into the budget that we're going through?
Yes.
Okay. Any question, other questions? Any other questions on the, oh, Krista?
Just to clarify, going back on the clubs and councils to confirm whether it's three or four, whichever the elementary school chooses to run. Similar is with the athletics, they have a tiered stipend schedule, so some club, school may choose more expensive stipend clubs than another, so we wouldn't necessarily see the same expense.
You would not, but it wouldn't necess, in the elementary, it would not, it's a flat, but then a tiered, depending upon how much experience you have. So if you have three years' experience, then you're up at a higher, but if someone new coming in, you would be at a lower first-level tier.
But it's not the club.
It's not the club, it's the experience of the staff.
Correct, yes.
So that would differ, would explain why we would see different rates at different schools because of the experience of the administrator.
I also think not, not every elementary school is running as many clubs and councils as others, so that's also a factor. Anything else? It's on the transfers? Okay. So on the agenda, we have public comment. Do we have any public comment? So then we'll move on to the 2019, 2020 budget review. And Mike did provide and updated a revised spreadsheet so that we can all see what the administration has proposed, as well as board members have proposed. And Mike, do you want to walk through, I think there were a couple changes since our last meeting?
Yes. So the one that you, we're working off now in the upper right-hand corner says revised 2.5, 2019, just to make sure everyone's working off of the correct copy. The superintendent originally proposed a budget of 2.98% increase. The first column are some changes that the superintendent is recommending to his budget for the board, and those changes total an adjustment, a negative adjustment of $161,000, which brings it down to 2.82%. The following lines are what the Board of Education had highlighted at its last board meeting, some of the accounts that they would like to look at further, and that's how the second section is broken down into. So I'm not sure if anyone has any questions right now for what the superintendent is recommending for changes. We can start there and then go down to the board's recommended changes. Okay. And do note that I am here by myself today. So if I cannot answer your question, I will get back to you.
This could be answered on Tuesday night. I certainly think it's a good idea to not budget for services offered, but we could be offered otherwise. I'm looking at the special class teachers buying them. However, I can know that there are children who are not blind who require assistance with legal, who are partners, so I just want to make sure that there is some way to convince you of that.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
If you have a question, I'm not sure which it goes in, but we're putting in the new air conditioners, that did the administration put in not just the money for buying the air conditioners, but also the money for running them?
Yes.
Thank you. That is in the new budget?
Yes.
And then a board member had made a recommendation on the substitutes to bring the, that line in, back to where we are in the current fiscal year?
Yes, so I did, all the substitute lines have adjusted to bring it in line to the revised projection, and I do have a comment in the comment section of admin recommended.
So that is now an admin recommended reduction?
Well, so I was the one who asked for current year over year. I, Mike, tell me if I'm reading this correctly, that's a reduction I looked for. You have taken my suggestion and then put in what your suggestion is on that?
Correct.
So I will amend my motion to, or my, what's the word? My modification, thank you, to match the admin modification. I wanted a re-scrub of that line, which is why I brought it all back down. So if you re-scrubbed it, I'll take the admin's recommendation on that.
So that would be on Tuesday night, you would modify your, or you can do it now?
You can do it now, because we're just modifying it, it's not a standing motion. So when you redo this list, you can put in your suggested amount.
So the, the suggestion that I have is in this list right now, so if we look at-
So you're good, you're basically good with what he has in substitution?
I'm good with their recommendation. I wanted them to go back, re-scrub their numbers. I didn't like the rate of increase that we were seeing, and I didn't like accounting for it in the budget that way. So I asked the administration at our last meeting to go back to year-end. I think that caused them to re-scrub, and I'm fine that they're more comfortable with this rather than the full modification that I was proposing.
And then, Mike, the other night, I withdrew my modification for the director of instructional technology. I got the information I needed, so we can remove that modification.
And then there was also another one, just to make sure, was there another removal that we were going to do as well, which was the- Which was the inter-scholastic equipment?
Well, I was going to say, yes. If the ice machine, it became clear that we are just replacing a broken ice machine. So that is a replacement for fifty-five hundred dollars. So that can be put back in.
Was that your modification, Mrs. McHammon? I just don't remember off the top of my head.
R C eleven, line four-one-six, object two-four-zero-zero-six, athletic training supplies. It was an ice machine?
No, no, I'm just asking, was it your modification? I just want to remove it if it was someone else's modification and they're not here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it was just, we clarified, it was just to replace a broken ice machine, so.
So just, so that, that line should be deleted from the next spreadsheet?
Yes.
Okay. And then the, there was a, this is why we have a new one as well. When we look at inter-scholastic equipment supplies and rentals, I did have the wrong line item, but the amounts were the correct amounts that were previously reported. So it's line four-four-two, inter-scholastic equipment supplies. There was a proposed adjustment for swim and dive in boys and girls for fifty percent cost share. I did, I wasn't at that meeting, but I did have a note that that was going to be removed.
It was removed, yeah, that evening. So we can take that off.
Take that one out as well? Okay.
Dennis didn't remove this.
Dennis did not remove it. And to clarify.
No, she removes. She removes swim and dive.
Okay.
I removed the cut. Dennis has the add, but to clarify, and I don't want to speak for Mr. Maroney, but I believe he was looking at all the offsites and not specifically one team.
It wasn't just a boys and girls hockey like you have in your note.
Yes. And the, the value, I was back to.
That is correct. Right. It just, he's not, he's not targeting one team at a time.
I would just.
I'll make that comment.
And on that particular line, I think Marge is the Title IX officer for the district. So I think it's probably a good idea to have her take a look at that, because anything that we change in terms of funding could have Title IX implications. So she should probably opine on that.
Okay.
Does anyone else have anything on that person?
Mr. Feeney, can you ask Dr. De Silva, the textbooks in P E, where those are booked?
Okay.
Thanks. And we have the backside of the page too, everyone, don't forget to turn over. I mean, I will strongly advocate for not altering budget control. Looking at the number of sections we have to break is six. I think the administration has made a strong case that four sections of budget control are necessary. So it is on there, but I, I will strongly recommend against it, just because when we have sections break and/or, as we've seen the past year, when we have I E Ps that require staff, we need to be in compliance as soon as we can, rather than going through a reappropriation process. Just so you all know where I stand on that.
I do, I agree with that. I guess in this current year, we would know at this point, for the most part, if there was going to be another section break, so.
So section break, we should not have any. But it would be questionable now as to whether or not that there's anything else that comes in, in particular, the area of special education.
Right. So we've used, in this current fiscal year, a hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two, but we still have funds remaining in case there's something unforeseen, for instance, in special ed.
Yes.
So the budget control, I guess, just to clarify, so everybody knows, it's not necessarily to be used for a section break. It can be used for other personnel things that come up during the year.
It's most usually used for staffing needs.
Right. So it's mostly used for staffing needs. But it's not, I don't, I guess I want to make clear that it's not necessarily a section break, per se. It might be some other personnel need that arises over the course of the year.
So there's really no way, Mr. Feeney, correct me if I'm wrong, the history on this, there's really no way to know what might come up as part of a mandated I E P. However, what we can do is look at how many sections we have in a break. So as a budgeting tool and mechanism to go forward when you're making a budget, it's a, it's a good, healthy way to say, okay, I have six sections that are close to breaking. So I, I, at least four of them are very close. I should budget that way. We don't hem ourselves in such that there's a contractual expense that's needed. We don't provide for it, or we don't have other things that show up that's necessary there. But it is very realistic with six sections on a breaking zone to at least say, okay, let's plan for four. And then if not, like anywhere else, there are, there are other things that come up. But, but mostly this is driven by enrollment and/or contractual expenses that we must give to children immediately. So for the most part, you're talking about not putting staff in front of kids or doing that with a delay.
So I, I agree that, that certainly enrollment is a fantastic place to start, and it's important to start there. Is that accurate, however, that the only analysis you really do to set that number is section breaks? Or is, is there other analysis? Again, I understand we can't necessarily predict I E Ps, but.
In, in general, we start by looking at the elementary as to the absorption rate that's in the elementary report, as to how many classes could be absorbed by, if we had an additional four students. So that's really where we start in looking at that. And in particular, I believe this year, there's five concerns that we have at the elementary level. And then we also, so that's really where we start at. And then we work with special education in the high school and the middle school as to where they currently are as well. And then we use that going forward. So we are recommending right now four. And elementary, there are some concerns. And then we do have some concerns at the special education level as well. And when we do go back, and we typically do, when we factor everything in, at least for, we, we try to keep it low. And four seems to be a realistic number. But when I did go back in history, it seemed that in two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, I believe, we had set aside funding for eight. And there were a lot of, perhaps, sections that could have broken in the elementary level in particular.
Okay. Now, I note, based on that, that however, that, you know, you mentioned elementary and you mentioned high school and middle school. And of course, it will vary over year, year over year. But we are, you know, one point five of the two point five we've used are high school and R C nineteen.
Yeah.
So is, are there conversations at the secondary level or with R C nineteen, as well as a third input to this?
Yes, there is. Yes.
So it's not just sped at the high school and the middle school, it's?
Correct. Oh, absolutely. It is not.
Anything else? Budget control?
No, I, I think it's proven. I don't think we can tie the administration's hands by eliminating this line item. Totally uncomfortable with what the administration has explained. I think, Mike, the only thing that you can know from a special ed standpoint is you know what's potentially leaving in terms of high school or seniors graduating. You know a little bit about who's coming in, but that changes through the course of the year.
Yes.
Okay. And then you did a good explanation on Jill's question. You know, we just can't tie the administration's hands with having the flexibility of.
The only other thing I have strongly, just to, to put up a flag, is I think Mrs. Stein and I both proposed a hundred thousand dollar change in excess cost. And I am comfortable, given the information that the administration has given us about this year doing that. However, from what they said in our budget meeting, January fifth, I don't know that I'd be comfortable doing that year over year. So I think that while we've been looking this at a percentage base overall, we're going to have to start looking this at a year-over-year submission rate, such that this, this number, we've trended up. But from the information I heard at that, that budget meeting, we may not be able to sustain that trend up. We may have kids who are no longer qualifying for excess cost and/or if there is a change in the formula. So people shouldn't expect year over year for us to be able to increase that. That is not an ever-increasing number. It is based on our student population. We are seeing trends that that number, that threshold may be very different next year.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. So I'm comfortable with the increase this year, but next year I might be telling you something different.
So I, recognizing that this is so difficult to predict, we were off by a pretty good amount last year. So I think that when we go forward, that as a group, we really need to agree to each of the assumptions or understand each of the assumptions that underlie the number that we get to. I think we should be very explicit. You know, of what you have here, what we think the thresholds are going to be based on our best guess. We, we have here what our estimated number for submissions is as of December. I think we should be clear about what we arrive at, you know, what the assumptions that went into. We can see that typically, increase is March to December. Do we think that's going to be the case? Can we document that in terms of that being an assumption? I think that we need to be very clear that we think it'll be fully funded this year, although not necessarily in previous years. Because I think as we sit here, we need to be all in agreement about how we got to this number and then be able to communicate that out as we, as we go forward. Because I don't want us to be on our back foot in terms of trying to defend the decision. We'll make the best decision we can, but as clear as we can be about how we got to that number.
So I'd be a little careful, and sometimes it's just the words. Like, I don't think we should ever be on our back foot about excess cost. We track it very, very detailed and very specifically, from what I hear in the office, which is why sometimes we have better return rates than the towns around us. So I do think, you know, the special education department can explain to us exactly how they track, if that's helpful. But I don't, I don't think this board should ever feel that we need to be on our back foot. And we are playing with a, an algorithm that the state chooses to be wonky with, not the Darien Board of Education. So I think while it is, is good to explain, and if the board needs another explanation of how we track excess cost, that's healthy. But I do, I do, some of the variability, I think, is not within our control. And so we should just acknowledge that. And as much as we can control or we can explain, I think we'll ask the administration to do that for us.
So I think that's actually, I think being on our back foot, I don't mean that we're on our back foot. I mean, it's a very variable number. So we have to be very clear about how we got to the number we got to, so that there is an understanding that we have absolutely done our very best to get to that point, so that we are not in a position that the, the fingers say, you guys didn't do any work, you know.
Yeah. I would hope, I would hope nobody says that.
I don't, I'm.
We spend a lot of time on excess cost.
I'm exaggerating, for, for the purpose of effect. But I, I think, I think the point is, a lot of work does go into this. It's extremely variable. The more clear we can be about how we got here, I think the better the conversation.
I think that just makes it helpful for the public too, because there is so much of what we don't know from the state. I think the more we can supply on our end, the better overall the analysis will be.
But at the end of the day, it's really about making a guess.
Right. It's our best guess. Right, exactly. There's two components.
So we can ask them all over, well, how are you making your guess? But they spend a lot of time doing it. They give us the best information possible. I don't think there's any dispute about that. But I think absent some objective standard or enlightenment from the state, the variability is coming. It's always going to be our most educated guess. And it seems like we get a very educated guess each year.
Right.
I think, but, you know, to everyone's questions and everyone's point, if there's another comfort level where people are not comfortable with that, I mean, there's a full-time person doing this, tracking it, filling out paperwork. I mean, the intensity of it, if I'm hearing there is people are not comfortable with the conclusion we're coming to, we should have that conversation. But we've got to give some credit to the professionals and the person who's doing it full-time also. With Tara's point, we continue to seem to get better return to other towns, which proves the point, our focus on it and how we're doing it.
Also, the more we say that, the more they're going to look at us. So, you know, we got a fair return on ours.
They can look at it all at once.
Yeah.
It's still what we file of what the state does.
Agreed.
Right. And what the state does is unpredictable. So at this point, we can guess what they're going to do in terms of.
We need to get to analysis.
The idea is to be a hundred percent.
We need to get to paralysis from analysis on this.
We'll, we'll never get it to the dollar, because we'll never know exactly.
Originally, we were supposed to be funded a hundred percent. We're already looking at, you know, sixty-eight, seventy-two, seventy-four. We move around. So, so, you know, the fun, there's a flaw in the fundamental application of the algorithm. But I do think if we, if we need to explain it better, there are questions of it. We try to do better every year. I, I do give credit, but I think, I think the whole town of Darien, the taxpayers, the beneficiary of how good we, we do do it, and if we can help explain that better, we'll continue to do that to Mrs. McHammon's point.
Yeah. And just so you know, that the population changes in this every year. So if someone moves from the elementary over to the middle school, it changes. And middle school over to high school, it changes. So in the elementary school, if someone or a child has one-to-one staffing, right? And now all of a sudden, it's put into a classroom of five. The whole formula, funding formula that we're actually applying has changed. It's basically, we no longer apply anymore.
Which is often what we hope too, for the growth of the child, that interventions have helped successfully. So that we, we had one-on-one financials, but we've hoped the child's grown and been able to access their education. And so a group setting, the least restrictive setting is the best. So, so, just so when people hear that, it's not that you move, all of a sudden you lose your one-to-one, but maybe all the right things are happening, but then that changes our formula again.
Right.
Or our, our submission.
Right. So every year, it's readjusted and analyzed as things change. But there's always that unpredictability of what is going to happen at the state level. And we can only do our best guess in what that's going to be. Any other questions on the budget control? Any other questions? I just, I, again, wanted to just bring up substitutes. And I think we talked about that enough. And maybe just to take a little deeper dive in to see what is actually at DHS and M M S. And I think it's just historically, at Holmes, those numbers seem to be higher. And then I think it's great that you're, the administration has recommended that we stay at the current fiscal year level for that. Any other comments, questions on transfers?
You mean on the modifications?
On the, I'm sorry, on the modifications, not the transfers.
On the, on the early learning program tuition, we did hear back from administration. I understand that there's a desire to peg us more or less to the current market rate. I wanted to hear back from administration about demand. I think just an understanding that we are fully confident that parents would continue to pay at this price point. I think it is worth understanding that because we have to be fifty-fifty to be in compliance, are, we have to be more sensitive to whether or not parents would, in fact, enroll at a higher price point. I don't disagree with it. I just want to make sure that we've thought about it. And there just wasn't anything in the note we got back indicating that we had looked at that. That's my, my first point. My second point is, I do think if we want to baseline, we could possibly smooth it out and/or we could consider what the appropriate timing is. We're getting ready to have a new building, and that also might be a good time to baseline. So, you know, I just.
It was my modification. You can answer maybe some of Mrs. McHammon's overall questions about, do we think? Sorry, my husband's texting me about laundry. That actually happens. The early, my, my analysis, I'm looking at the early learning program, is that, you know, we're going up about five thousand dollars. So it is kind of smoothed out. It's not really a significant increase overall. And yet our teaching staff, our percentage increases in special teachers are seven percent. Our teachers aides are up eight percent. So I do think that at some point, we have to at least keep up with some of our costs. So we're looking at raising four point five percent when our, just our contractual expenses are well up over five. Mine was an attempt to take that increase, kind of cut it in half to smooth it out, which was my theory on the four point five. The administration may have a feeling on that.
Should your tuition-paying typical peer models, just a question, be paying for increases in staff that likely have to do with disability?
So fifty percent, I went fifty percent, because fifty percent, I didn't give them the entire increase, because fifty percent of the population is tuitioning in, just like if they were at a private school. Now, there is a need for them also, so I don't think they should incur the whole cost. But if you were at a private school, you would be paying the whole cost of your teacher's tuition. Here, this is just the percent increase. They're not paying close to fifty percent of the teacher's salary. So that's how I came up with my four point five. To your question on why the administration, if the administration feels that we'll still maintain enrollment, you can answer that. I mean, Laura could answer that, but Laura did not seem bothered by this increase, is what you reported back to us.
So she was not opposed, which is different from in favor, but.
I'm sure no administrator's going to say, no, don't give me more money. We probably expected that.
I just wanted to push on it.
Well, she's not getting more money. She's not getting any more money. In fact, if she was opposed to the increase, I would expect here, because she is, to Mrs. McHammon's point, going out asking for more tuition, what Mrs. McHammon is worried about is that a deterrent to children entering the program, right? If I understand.
They're going to lose enrollment because it were too high.
So this increase is forty-six hundred dollars across about fifty students. I have to think the percentage increase is not going to be overly felt, but the parents could let us know if that forty-six hundred dollars divided by fifty was a deterrent to the school. But at some point, we have to keep pace, because our contractual fees are rising. We can't, I mean, every private school goes through a tuition analysis.
The tuition increases every year.
The tuition increases every year. I, I don't know somewhere that. I, I don't know somewhere that doesn't. So, I mean, I, I proposed it, that's how I looked at it. That we are experiencing contractual increases and yet holding at artificially low increase rates. But I don't think you, would I have liked to propose something quite higher, to be honest? Yes. But to your point of, um, kind of smoothing it out and bringing things in line, I felt that this was a gradual step. But I'm open to board comments or administration comments.
Well, I guess I would be curious, it, does that small increase take us out of market? In other words, are we still in line with what the other preschools are charging?
If not under.
Right, so.
We are.
So.
We're not, uh, we're not the lowest because we don't want to be the lowest where we're basically undercutting a local preschool environment. Uh, basically now everyone's coming here. We're not the highest, uh, as well. We're still, even with a four and a half percent, we're kind of in the middle of the pack. It's very difficult. We did do the analysis on an hourly basis, based upon what the tuition was. But it's very difficult because everyone's hourlies are different. So we have a little bit more extended time where there's others that basically have a three-hour or a four-hour and those. But even when you do the hourly rate, we're still okay. We're not the lowest, we're not the highest. We seem to be in the middle of that.
That's the bigger point, we're still competitive within that.
Correct.
Mike, do you have any information as to, I was, wanted to look at that number of four point five. How does that compare? Do you have any sense from the other community preschools as to what, uh, percentage increase that they were looking at?
I don't have the percentage increase. I have what they currently charge.
Right, 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 right. I, I'm just, I somewhat am concerned just at the rate at which, not the, the model to get there. I'm worried that if all the other community preschools are looking at two, three, three and a half percent, and we come in at four and a half, what is that doing to our current three-year-old parents? Or those who are just applying in, expecting to come, and now we're looking at a four and a half? I think, I'm wondering if that is in line. I, I don't mind if we're getting there, if there's a benchmark which we feel we should be. But should it be tapered, like we do in other contractual, uh, arrangements? So I'm a little concerned at four point five.
Okay.
So forty-six hundred dollars divided by fifty parents, roughly, is ninety-two dollars in addition on their tuition bill. Okay, I have to argue that that is, cannot be a deterrent.
Well, especially if they're still in line with the market.
Well, I made the argument that fifteen thousand dollars for a swim team budget divided by sixty kids is how much per swimmer.
No, because this, this bill is actually going to the parents. This, this is the bill.
I know, but the.
Their, their bill will increase ninety-two dollars this year.
Right, and what was the swim team increase when we looked at it per family?
No, but it, it's different. You're actually tuitioning in.
These are, these are people that are paying to go to school. I don't think it's, I don't think it's an apples-to-apples comparison.
Versus, versus, uh, activities fees. I mean, you could do that with textbooks and everything else.
I'm just saying that. It's cost to the parents that I am concerned at all of a sudden going four point five. Is that in line with what other community preschools are looking at on an annual basis?
I thought that Mike just said that they did look at that.
No, he didn't have the.
No, so our tuition is in line.
Our tuition is.
Our tuition is.
So the percentage increase over last year would need to be similar. If we were lower last year and we're still middle of the pack, then we must be relatively in a percentage-based increase in the same.
I just don't have what they're proposing for next year is what goes in.
Right, so we don't know how much they're going up.
Do we have the number at which, um, tuition for these kids is fully covered? Are we subsidizing typical peer models?
Some we are subsidizing, yes. And we're basing that upon, um, free and reduced lunch.
Okay, but otherwise, we were assuming that the current rate of tuition fully covers expenses.
Correct.
No.
No.
That's my question.
No, uh, current, uh, tuition does not cover all of our expenses.
We are subsidizing everyone.
We are, yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Feeny, any information on healthcare for me?
I do not.
Keep hoping.
Hey, anything else on the budget? What was budget? Mike, nothing? No? Everybody good?
Did you, um, anything on the capital budget?
Well, this next, what you printed today doesn't have capital on it.
It does not.
I think we all saw there was a question on the univentilators that we saw that both those projects were priority two. The board voted to move to priority one. I've put a modification on to cut it. I think that was the question, were the both, the ones we moved up.
Right, I had asked where they, I had thought one was a priority one, one had been a priority two, so we still haven't heard back.
So they both were priority twos.
Okay.
We originally had proposed, uh, Holmes, the replacement of the nineteen thirties wing as a priority two. And the ventilation staff and offices in the nineteen thirties wing was a priority two as well.
So both, someone had moved both of those.
Both of those were changed to ones. And then we also had increased the, um, replacement of the nineteen thirties wing unit ventilators to include abate, abatement for an additional hundred thousand where it was previously presented as, not including the abatement process.
So could you clarify then with Mr. Lynch? Because my modification was go back to, to remove those back downs to priority two and to ask Mr. Lynch how much money he needed to study for the project. Originally, he told us sixty to eighty. If he could give us a smaller dollar amount, it's a little bit big of a spread for a budget.
Okay.
Cause my modification will be for the study that he would like, rather than the whole money in the project.
So it'll be a net so that we can do a study, just see what the real need is.
Katie, was your modification on the, on the, um, security, was that to reduce it to a study or is that to cut it altogether?
I cut it and she added money in for a study. It was two different, um, modifications.
Two different.
I cut it.
Okay, so, so that, that'll be another thing.
Yeah.
Oh, I don't want a study.
Not for the security booth. You wanted to, these, what was?
Uh, for, for Lynch's.
For Lynch.
The security booth is a full cut.
Yes, I cut the security.
If someone would like to put a study in, I didn't put a study in. At the moment, it stands as a full cut.
I wasn't sure if it was what it was, I just wanted to clarify.
I cut the booth.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
So then we just need to.
I'll have some questions about that tomorrow.
You did this for the univentilators.
Yeah. Planning that, the security booth cut, I'll have some questions.
Okay.
You know, in terms of what the original goal was and then how we can figure out if we want that original goal.
Okay.
Um, so we, you don't have that information. Because typically, we don't do even further on cut night. We go through the modifications and we amend motions. So maybe.
There's no real discussion.
If you could ask Dr. Landon to prepare a memo for us, and we'll have the memo available for the public as well, just so that night continues.
On, on Tuesday night, it'll be quick. It'll be going through each of the items and yay or nay.
But if, if Mrs. McHammon needs that information or anyone else needs it to make that decision, she should have it before him.
Yeah, so what the original goal of the.
Will do. Yeah.
Thank you.
Gotcha.
But just to be clear, on that, on that evening, there won't be further discussion on those items.
We typically don't take further information from the administration. At that point, we are going through our modifications and that's kind of the point of this meeting, to get everything we need.